Good evening, and I welcome all of you to tonight's meeting. Before we get started, Mr. Bolden will offer a word of prayer.
Let us bow for a moment of prayer. Father, we want to thank you yet for another day. We know it's not that we've been so good, and in our minds we have treated others fairly, but it is your mercy and your grace as to why we're here at this appointed place and time. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. We meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. May our personal faith give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. Please share a little of your wisdom with us to help us do right by all concerned. Thank you for your heavenly blessing. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Welcome to tonight's meeting of November 19th, 2019. We do not have anyone that has signed up for open forum, so we will move on to the consent agenda. And if there's anyone who would like to pull something for consideration, if not, Chair would entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve the consent agenda as it stands?
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. For our regular agenda, number five, consider purchase of Pierce Saber FR Fire Engine from Sidens Martin Emergency Group. And we have our fire chief all excited because Christmas came early.
Mayor Council Keith Kiplinger, you're fire chief and sometime legal analyst. I'm excited to be here tonight to recommend approval of the purchase of a brand-new fire engine from Sidens Martin Emergency Group in the amount of $498,000 and a few more dollars. Sidens Martin has provided us a number of fire engines over the last several years. They're manufactured by Pierce Manufacturing. This fire engine will be built in Florida, custom-made for Nacogdoches Fire. It'll take about nine months to purchase. The fire engine's costing just under $500,000. Of that, we are responsible for about $5,000. The Office of Legal Counsel, the Office of Development, and our grant coordinator have assured me that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and we are ready to make this purchase. We'll be replacing a 1997 model reserve fire engine that has served our community for 22 years. It was also built by Pierce Manufacturing, the same company. The new fire engine will be assigned to Fire Station Two, which is at MLK and East Main. It'll have a 1,500 gallon per minute water pump. 500 gallons of water will be carried on it all the time. And it's going to allow our firefighters to be safer, because a lot of safety improvements have come along in motor vehicles in the last 22 years. If you had a 1997 car, you will realize it didn't have quite all the features that a new car does. And so, it comes equipped with backup cameras and sensors and better seat belts and some airbag-type things. And so, we really hope you'll approve it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Thank you very much. So is there anyone here that has a comment about us acquiring a new fire engine? Hearing none. Questions or comments?
I'm curious, what wears out on these things? The engine probably is good forever, especially with the short little distances we're driving. Is it a lot of the components and the peripherals?
So it is. And over a period of 20 years, things shift and pop and crack, and so the entire bed, the body, is all either welded or bolted together, depending on the manufacturer. And so, you just sort of see those components all start to wear out over a period of time. The ladder truck that we have is quite old, and I reference that often. It's a little older than this fire engine that's being replaced. And our ladder truck, two weeks ago, we put new steel wheels on it because the steel wheels were so, in the front, were so thin, just from where the lug nuts went on. It compressed the metal over a period of 23 or 24 years, over and over again, that the wheels on the front of the ladder truck had to be replaced. And so, all of those components do have to be replaced. They just sort of wear out and they fade. The other thing that happens that we've experienced is that the engines lose power over a period of time. And those engines that once were able to climb the hills, and, you know, our terrain is pretty dramatic here, and those engines, the motors just frankly just don't have the compression that they once had. The engines in these trucks take more wear and tear than an over-the-road truck because of the short distances. So, we start them, they don't ever warm up completely, then we drive them fairly hard, and then we park them and they cool off. And so, what we find is that, in the 1997 reserve engine that we're replacing, we've actually done an end-frame rebuild on that entire engine for about $25,000 in that period of time that we've had it. So, we've had it 22 years, but we've rebuilt the engine once in that period of time. The one thing that does not ever wear out is the transmission. They last forever.
But you put a lot of hours compared to miles on that type of vehicle, right?
We do. And then, the number of hours is dramatically different. And so, when you look at the number of hours that are on these fire engines that we replace, if you equated them to miles, let's say 50 miles an hour, you'd be looking at 500,000 to 700,000 miles on these fire engines when they're replaced. The engine that we're replacing will have somewhere around 150,000 miles on it, but the mile equivalent in hours is three, four, five times that number.
Wow. My question is just out of curiosity. I assume that there's a pretty good market for second-hand fire engines for, is the plan to sell this one?
It is. We'll auction it, and it will go quickly, but the value of it will be almost nothing.
That was part of my curiosity, was what you anticipated that could actually...
Right. So, an organization that wants to buy a 22-year-old fire engine is one that can't afford to buy a 19-year-old fire engine. And so, you end up with usually a small volunteer fire department that doesn't have a lot of use, doesn't have a lot of fires, doesn't have a lot of calls, and it will serve them for another seven, eight, 10 years, and then they'll move on. So, somebody that runs it on one or two calls a week, it probably will hold up. If we're running it on seven or eight a day, it's time for it to go away, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much. So, we need a motion to approve the purchase, please.
I make a motion to consider purchase of a Pierce Saber FR Fire Engine from Sidens Martin Emergency Group. I make a motion to approve agenda item number five is written.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Chief. Number six, City Council Work Session. We're going to visit a little bit about redevelopment, and I will let you have the floor. Council Anderson.
This will unfortunately be a brief discussion tonight. I had a little scheduling conflict with some of my help in doing this, so I'm not going to be able to do kind of the full presentation. I would, if council would agree to it, maybe like to come back around to this in January at our work session at that point, at which point everything will be very well planned out, and we'll have a contingency in case someone can't make it at that point. But in the meantime, I can kind of give you a little sort of basic gist of what the idea I'm kind of, I've kind of been looking at the area in which I live, because that's the area that I know best. But there are a lot of areas around Nacogdoches that I think can, and I hope will, benefit from the creation of this model for redevelopment. And the core of that is to get property owners and residents in those areas, involved in, with a little initial guidance, largely self-organization, to promote their own areas for, whether it's renovation, redevelopment, or whether it is new development and on vacant lots. There are a lot of opportunities in town. We have had a lot of, for lack of a better term, exodus of new development, especially to outlying areas as people go to some of the smaller school districts. I think that this is a good time to kind of strike while they aren't as hot, as the confidence in Nacogdoches ISD is building, and rightfully so. I think some of that exodus will slow and I hope reverse. Some of those people, I hope, will come back, and as we get closer to the reality of I-69, I think it's a good time to prepare for, a lot of it is an opportunity for affordable housing. That's what excites me about renovation, redevelopment in particular, is that people who are willing to put a little sweat equity into a property can end up with something very nice, something to be very proud of, without a huge investment. But we're trying to involve, or have the group involve Police Department with Neighborhood Watch, involving lenders, real estate agents, you know, having a lot of different tiers involved with this. And I think, and part of what I'd like to do tonight is to get all of you to think about areas in your own words that might benefit from this sort of thing, so we can, I hope, discuss those specifically when we get down to the nuts and bolts of the whole thing. But I hope that this will create, as I said, a model that can be used really all over town. I can't think of any particular ward that does not have neighborhoods that have been the victim of some neglect, that are good possibilities for some of this infill and redevelopment.
Okay. Before we go any further, I did not ask for public comment before you started on this topic.
Oh, I understand.
And so, is there anyone here that has a comment about redevelopment in general? Okay, hearing none. So, for me, can you clarify a little bit about requesting exactly what you want us to do as far as identifying wards for discuss, or identifying neighborhoods for discussion?
A lot of it is just, you know, to the extent that you know, might know these areas in your wards, areas where there is some potential for sort of a core, at least to start with, of renovation of existing properties, where there are some vacant lots that could potentially be developed as new properties, where there are residents and property owners who would be interested and willing to work together. And it, you know, it does not have to be an all-consuming enterprise, but the more that we can, to me anyway, get residents in various neighborhoods to take ownership of their neighborhoods and promote them for these sorts of things, and use resources that we have available to us here, then I think we can provide what I think is a superior alternative to going out of the city and just building new neighborhood after new neighborhood. We have a lot to offer inside the city. This is something that Mr. Mantey had touched on and discussed some, and actually had a workshop on at one point, and it's something that I would like to try to help carry forward.
So, in, my understanding was at first we would like talk about one little area and do it, and use it as an example or a pilot, but now we're looking, we want to know...
We don't, we do not have to discuss specifics of other areas. I would just like for everyone to think about areas and have those in mind, so that once, again, I hope, the model is there, it makes it easier to transfer that model to other neighborhoods.
Okay, that's good. Questions?
No, no question, but just a comment.
Yes.
I have an interest in this redevelopment, mainly because I have areas that I have concerns about. Now, the thing is, I've, on average, of looking at certain streets, and you've got 14 properties in line with these streets, the majority of the properties are owners out of town. On average, there was 14 empty lots, and all of them overgrown, basically. And then, there was, on average, three abandoned homes on those streets. And there was addition to that was two of them that probably needed demolition right now. But there was only four owners that lived in Nacogdoches and had either, they lived in those homes and had families. The rest of them was out-of-town families, and some of them hadn't paid property taxes in 10, 12, 14 years.
Yes, we have a lot of that in my area as well.
So, that is a struggle to redevelop some areas, you know, and it's not because of ownership of citizens in Nacogdoches, it's ownership of someone outside of Nacogdoches. And that's where the struggle for me in my area.
And it does become a challenge there, because it takes some work to track down owners, and then contact them, and hopefully, they are interested enough to reply. Sometimes they do, sometimes they do not. We've run into both sides of that.
Yeah. During one of the timeframe that we was trying to purchase property for church, we would run down the owners, but they were so far behind in property taxes, it was more than what the property was worth.
Mm-hmm.
And they wouldn't respond.
Yeah.
So. But I am interested in redevelopment. I'm hoping we can do, come up with some solution.
And those are challenges that I hope pulling, pulling in involvement from people who are in the real estate industry, and potentially even people who are in the legal industry, who are familiar with researching deeds and titles and so forth, can help to overcome some of those hurdles.
Yeah, we, in the totality of the area, there was one construction rehab person coming and bought about 51 properties. Some vacant, some needed a lot of work done on them. So now, majority of people that's owning those properties not owners, they're renters.
In a previous career and a previous life, back when they used to lend out seven figures to 22-year-olds, I did that in Houston, a lot in the Heights area, a couple of different pockets there. And we saw a lot of that, but a lot of that, I think, was driven by the market. I'm curious if you've seen this, and your model's kind of based on something else, or loosely based on something else that you've seen, where there's community buy-in and kind of a push for the sweat equity piece?
In our neighborhood, there has been some of that. We have some newer residents and some longer-term residents who have mostly, for primary residences, at least initially, have purchased houses that were, in some cases, in very bad need of help, and have renovated them. And at least a couple of those people have ended up buying either adjacent or nearby properties as an investment, which is, that's what I hope to see some of with the redevelopment, is people getting very invested in their respective neighborhoods.
Awesome.
It sounds like you've got a lot of different ideas that one could appeal to someone, whereas just one way of doing it would not.
Right, right. And there are a lot of these neighborhoods that are very mixed in what they have to offer. Some of them have light renovation, some of them have heavy renovation, and some of them have vacant lots. And there are a lot of areas that have all three of those. Our area is one of them, but there are, now, I can think of half a dozen offhand other neighborhoods in town that have all three of those elements there, that I think, you know, this is from my perspective, but this is kind of what we do, I think are very attractive for both private residents and potentially for investment properties, for people who want to do that. And that, you know, as we get, I hope, closer to a little more concerted effort for affordable housing, be it multifamily or single-family, or mixture of both, I hope, are very attractive areas for adding that as infill developments in the middle of existing neighborhoods.
And I'd imagine it's a challenge in all of our neighborhoods in Nacogdoches, but the appraisals are a pain in the rear, because we've been stuck, there's just not a lot that turns over, so there's not a lot of comps, so you get a pretty low per square foot appraisal. And so, that's been an issue we've had for a long time here. So, I'd imagine the critical mass needed really isn't that big. You get three or four 1,200, 1,600, 1,800-foot homes.
It doesn't take much for appraisers to be comfortable with comps. Yeah, as you said, once you get to that three or four in the, you know, 12-square-block area, they start to get more comfortable with being a little more realistic, I think, with appraisals.
Awesome. Cool. Let's do it.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right.
Okay. Well, let's move on to infrastructure. Is there anyone here that would like to make a public comment about the topic of infrastructure in our town? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Jeffers, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. On the infrastructure, we were able to generate some preliminary figures on need in water and sewer, but we did not receive the information on financing until late yesterday. Therefore, we're not ready to have a full-fledged discussion. So, we'll retool and come back on December the 17th. And now that I've said that, are anybody going to be missing in action on December the 17th?
I hope not. I mean, I hope I'm not. Nothing too...
The numbers guy, okay, is getting excited about it. So, we'll bring that back also. I think that we'll be at a point where John Martin, our financial advisor, that we can have him here, which will make the discussion about financing options even a little bit more interesting. On the projects, I think that I mentioned that we classified those as a high need, medium need, and low need. Highly unlikely that we could finance all of those needs if you wanted to, but I don't think that you would want to. Financing all of the high priority is not going to be a challenge, and maybe even financing most, if not all, of the medium priority may be doable, but you may not want to. But we'll have those discussions on December the 17th, Madam Mayor.
In your experience, is there one type of infrastructure that is more popular with the public than another? I mean, most people, it seems to me, want to see something big and shiny and fun, and not what's buried underground, but are there projects that they're more likely to want to fund?
Yeah, and I should clarify that when we borrow money with water and sewer, there does not have to be an election.
Bond election, okay.
And so, that's what we're looking at as far as the immediate need, and we're not even talking about a bond issue yet. I think on the bond issue, you need to have a lot of community buy-in to determine what the needs are. The model would be similar to what NISD did on their bond issue that passed, and that's a whole other process. What we're doing right now is addressing what we consider to be pressing needs. And the Bonita and Lanana Creek sewer trunk mains, those are pressing needs. And that's what we're talking about, being able to finance, the glamorous and highly visible water and sewer. But we all know, if you turn on your faucet and nothing comes out, then people get a little excited. And also, if their sewer is stopped up, they also get a little excited. So, we need to make sure that those, that that infrastructure is taken care of, and we're pushing up against the wall with those two trunk mains that needs to be done sooner rather than later.
Do you have any questions?
No.
No? Mr. Pence?
Ma'am.
No? No? Thank you very much. We will move on to the farmer's market discussion. Is there anyone here that has anything they would like to say? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Jeffers?
Madam Mayor, City Council. You asked us to look at the site that is adjacent to the park directly behind City Hall on Cox Street. You got a snapshot of that site. That building belongs to the city. I will say that the site is doable. You're going to have to be creative, because it is in the floodway as well as in the floodplain. And I think that you're all very familiar with what those restrictions are. Also, you're adjacent to a railroad, which creates a safety issue, but that can be addressed with, and controlled with fencing. There's the property outlined in yellow, and you can see the floodway. The short answer on the floodway is, you can't do anything in the floodway, or there's very little that you can do in the floodway, but it doesn't impact existing property. And then, you can see that the entire site is in the floodplain, which means that there are restrictions on that development. This is a preliminary design. We're not proposing that this is it. This is just something which demonstrates that the project can work around the building. You can see the parking. And then, the other area is where the various booths and then a gazebo in the center, and I'm sure that we can talk about other designs also. We have not identified as to whether or not there's going to be any interest in, say, a health food store or some other entity that's going to be tied with the farmer's market. That site is going to be challenging for such a venture, but we are, because that's what council asked, and I think that that's the, I guess, the dream farmer's market, is to have that type of complementary business, but we'll continue to work on that. We have not generated firm numbers just yet, and those will be forthcoming as we continue the discussion. We want to make sure that the council, based on the preliminaries, that you are okay with the site, believe that it still has potential, and also are, you can't do it without the farmer's market group, and they are very appreciative of the city council's interest in the future. But I think that they're not in a position to say, yes, this is a great site, no, it won't work for us, until they see the numbers and we begin to bore down on what the particulars actually are. So, what we're asking tonight, if the city council concurs, do you want us to continue with the development of a more specific proposal? And then, when we come back December the 17th, and I think that numbers and actual proposals are going to be pretty firm, and then it's a matter of determining the level of interest. We haven't talked about where the money comes from, or how much it will cost, but Anna has promised the bazillion dollars, and so, I'm sure we can take a little piece out of that bazillion in order to get the project done.
What is the, in this area... What is the, in this area, if you, if you had concrete pads with roofs on them, you know, versus a building, can you do something like that?
We'll be mindful that that area is in the floodplain. And so if there's a requirement to elevate a foot above the flood, floodplain, then yes. But then we'll have to look at the, the particulars of that layout and exactly what we can and cannot do. Mr. Bartlett is a self-proclaimed expert in that area who will guarantee that there will be no negativity from FEMA with whatever it is that is proposed. Just don't look him in the eyes right now because you may see that he doesn't agree with that statement.
Can we plant trees there?
You know, that's one of the ironic things about the floodplain is that floodplain is covered up with trees. Trees are bad for creating obstructions, dams, and that's okay. But you're, you're limited to what you can put in the floodplain. I would argue that you can plant trees, but you're just going to have to wait and see what the final proposal looks like. I agree that that site is rather barren. And so there's, the, the aesthetics of the site, they're still going to need to work. You know, one of the pluses is, is that the building, which is in, in the floodway, not all of it, but it has a bathroom. And so we'll be able to renovate that bathroom to where it could be usable by the site. And that's, that's a real plus for that particular site. Also, council member Anderson has mentioned, you know, that food trucks, even when the farmer's market isn't in play. And so we haven't even considered that, and that's an element that's yet to be added.
I have a question, I guess. Would there be a health concern if there was underground contamination? If we placed the farmer's market at this site?
There are some potential environmental concerns that cost money to address, and then we will have those fully vetted before a decision is finally made. Short answer though is that we think that if there are any environment, environmental concerns, they can be mitigated at a reasonable expense, but that's speculation.
I was, there was a neighborhood in Houston that was right next to a, the switching station of this nature. And it was less than a hundred yards. Now, but in the beginning, there was, they didn't have well water. They had well water instead of city water at that time. And sixty percent of the residents of that neighborhood developed cancer. And they determined it was from the switching station, chemicals spilling over, going into the underground water. And I was wondering if that would be an issue, if the soil itself would be an issue for farmer's market.
That's an excellent point, but we will have that fully vetted before a decision is made. Thank you.
That's good to know. I'm, I'm curious, a couple of other, probably simpler questions to answer. The railroad right-of-way, do you know how far that is from the actual tracks themselves by chance?
Mr. Bartlett?
Approximately, I think it's three hundred feet there.
Oh, okay. Is there a possibility to expand that building south? And/or look at possibly the east side of South Street, south of Cox, where it's just the floodway? Or floodplain, excuse me?
Mr. Bartlett?
We, we can do expansions in non-habitable structures in the floodplain, but not in the floodway. So it's not habitable public building, that's a possibility.
Habitable as in lived in versus occupied? It's going to be so booming with business, it'll be almost like it's lived in, I think. Just because it look, rough pencil guesstimations, about five thousand square feet for that building that stands there now, is that about right? That probably wouldn't get us where we would need to go to get a, to have a, some sort of a more permanent tenant in there, I'd imagine. You mentioned that it'd be hard, but I was just trying to ballpark it.
Yeah, I visualize that if there's going to be a tenant, that they're not going to be in that building. We've got, we have to find another site in the immediate vicinity that is workable. And I, that's just speculation on my part.
Do you have anything? So you need some direction then. What do we think about that? Any thoughts?
No. What are you asking us?
Well, do you want them to continue?
Oh, okay.
Developing?
To spend some more resources may mean that we need to spend some money here and there to further vet the site. And like I said, it won't be a hundred percent ready to go. But when we come back, we're going to say, hey, this site is going to cost X number of dollars to develop. And then there's a, an accompanying discussion about where is the money going to come from. We, we hope that as we develop plans that the farmer's market can become a little bit more comfortable and say, yes, we'd like to move there, or no, thank you, it's not a, not a good fit for us. And if they say no, thank you, then I think the follow-up question as well, do you have a preferred site? There was some discussion about trying to expand the existing site, you know, which has limitations. And then we had a couple of other sites that are certainly viable and don't have some of the challenges that this site does. But this particular site fits in to what council Anderson was talking about, you know, in promoting redevelopment of, of an existing neighborhood instead of it being, say, in a more commercial area.
Well, I mean, I would have an interest in seeing if we could feasibly develop that area cost-effectively wise, though.
Are you still insisting that we add a statute of you to go in that development?
Maybe a few bricks with the name on it.
I can give you a brick.
Yeah, excited to hear.
Your thoughts?
I, I like it. I, I, I hear some of the challenges. That, that does seem a little bit daunting. But I, in general, I like a lot about it, if those things don't crush it. I, I do think it'd be pretty, I like what we have now. We, we could expand that, and to me, then you'd save having to redevelop another area altogether. And so it's not just about expanding the number of stalls as much as it is trying to bring consistency from my perspective. And so the anchor tenant thing, whether it's Granary Street or somebody else, that seems like a pretty critical driver to get people there on a consistent basis. So that, I think that's probably my, my main concern is whether or not we could fit that in there and all the wonderful parking requirements that we need to have there.
I'd also envisioned that, that if we can tie in food, a food truck court with this, that that will also help drive consistent attendance at the, the farmer's markets as they have them.
So, we're going to go a little bit further with it.
See you on December the seventeenth.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do we have executive session this evening?
No, ma'am.
Okay, well then our, oh, thank you, ma'am. Item number seven, for the futures. Now, we've already talked about, we're going to have some more discussion on infrastructure in December. And that could take up quite a bit of time. Is there something else someone wants to revisit or?
I think we'll have a little bit more information on this one, likely.
This will be back on the agenda, and then council member Anderson, did you intend for yours to be, you said January?
Yeah, we, we had talked about pushing that to January so that we can put more focus on infrastructure. That, that'll be the big one, I think, next time, but also on farmer's market if we've got more to discuss there.
Yeah, infrastructure and farmer's market at that point's going to be a full plate, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then that's what we will do on the seventh. So, now may I adjourn the meeting, Madam Secretary? Thank you very much. Our meeting for November nineteenth is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.